All right, thank you Andy. So, now I'm gonna call this meeting to order that we've had our introduction. At this time, Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the roll?
Ms. Alfonja?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here. Let the record reflect that all board members are present and accounted for, and at this time, I'm gonna turn the meeting over to our student rep for our opening.
Thank you. Today, we will be led in the pledge by Andrew's 5th grade student, Rayland Alata. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rayland. We understand that you have something prepared today?
Yes, I have a speech to say.
Thank you. Can you share it with us?
It's called "Life" by Paul Lawrence Dunbar, 1872 through 1906. "A crest of bread and a corner to sleep in, a minute to smile and an hour to weep in. A pint of joy and a peck of trouble, never laugh but the muzz come double, and that's life."
You come back? Great job. Could you please tell us a little bit about yourself, some of your hobbies?
Some of my hobbies is I like to cheer and I like to go outside and play.
Very good. What's your favorite subject in school?
Math.
Sounds great. And who do you have here supporting you today?
My family and the principal and assistant principals of my school.
That's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any comments from board members? Ms. Alfonja?
Thank you so much for... Just wanted to ask that those who came to support this beautiful young lady tonight to please stand to be recognized. Thank you so much for sharing Rayland with us tonight. We really enjoyed the poem.
Anyone else?
Dr. Mason.
Mr. Samuels?
I know Mr. Alata is wearing his uniform, and I just wanna say thank you so much, sir, for your service.
And I'd just like to say thank you all once again for sharing Rayland with us, and I know she could've been anywhere tonight, but she chose to be here with us, so thank you so much. I'm being asked, I don't know if this is a setup, how many Ramens are sitting out there with you? Thank you all for being here. All right, we're gonna move along. Next is adoption of the agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, move approval of the agenda as presented with the following change. I'd like to add a section for action, and I can add that between deliberation and hearing of any delegations or presentations as Section 5.5 or 5A, and the action item would be Student Disciplinary Number 2025 Tag 06.
Second.
It's been properly motioned by Ms. Kilgore and seconded by Dr. Banks Gray that we approve tonight's agenda with the addition of items for action, making that item number 6 and moving the rest of the items down the agenda accordingly. Any discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Alfonja?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. All right. At this time, I will turn the mic over to Ms. Goral for our recognitions.
Well, thank you Chair Dr. Mason, Vice Chair Ms. Jackson Alfonja, members of our school board, Superintendent Dr. Haynes, and members of our Hampton City Schools family. As you can see, we have a packed house tonight. Everybody is filling the seats. So, we have multiple recognitions that include our students, staff, and our school board members. So, at this time, would Mr. Kilgore please proceed to the microphone at center stage to assist with recognitions, and we're gonna also have Ms. Charbonneau join you. She's gonna act as your Vanna this evening. All right. So, tonight, we're gonna actually begin our recognitions by honoring our middle school girls and boys soccer champions. We're gonna start with our girls team, so I would ask that Head Coach Penny Miles and her assistant coaches Hannah Woodward and Del Shon Bell and all of their soccer student athletes from Kilgore Gifted Center girls team join me right here at the podium. So, just line up on either side facing the board. Right around this way. Stop right there, and I'm gonna stop you right here so they can see your pretty face. There we go. All right. So, as you're aware, HCS started offering middle school grade sports in the 22-23 school year. We are happy to announce that Kilgore Gifted Center won the soccer championship for the girls team for the 25-26 school year. Let's give them a round of applause. So, this Kilgore team, under the direction of Head Coach Penny Miles, was victorious over Andrew's pre-K through 8th school with a score of 5 to 1 and a season record of 7, 0, and 1. Again, let's give them another round of applause.
I can have the coaches and the students join me on the stage here?
Well, he needs, he needs the certificate. We're gonna get Vanna straight this evening, don't worry.
We got, that's a big stack. On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair Ms. Jackson Alfonja, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, I'm honored to present... Hampton City School Board, congratulations, proudly presented to Kickitane Gifted Center Middle School Girls Soccer Champions 2025.
Kilgore Gifted Center.
I did it. Kilgore Gifted Center, yeah.
All right, we're gonna let the parents take a quick picture. You look that way, and then I'm gonna get you to... Go ahead. You come on.
Now, before you all leave the stage, I ask that any members of the Kilgore community, including administrators, teachers, parents, and other guests who are here tonight to support these students, please stand to be recognized.
All right, thank you, Goral. So, you can have a seat. So, they're winning soccer championships. Let's see if they can roll up a banner. All right. Our next recognition is Jones Magnet Middle School, who won the soccer championship for the boys this year for the 25-26 school year. So, I'd ask that Head Coach Carrie Smith and Assistant Coach Eric Birch and the soccer student athletes from Jones Magnet Middle School Boys Team join me up front at the podium. Congratulations. He's excited. We're gonna get there in just a second, I promise. All right. So, this team here, am I correct, this is not your first championship win, is it?
Yeah, we won last year, well.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought. That's what I thought. That's why I wanted to ask. So, the team, under the direction of Coach Smith, was victorious over Kilgore Gifted Center with a score of 7 to 1 and a season record of 7 and 0. Additionally, the team won all of their regular season games with a mercy rule. That's a, that's a huge accomplishment. Let's give them a round of applause.
I could have the coaches and the team members come up on stage with me? On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair Ms. Jackson Alfonja, the Hampton School Board, and the Superintendent Dr. Haynes, I am honored to present this certificate and banner to the coaches and coins to each of the players and coaches, and the certificate reads, "Certificate of Achievement from the Hampton City School Board. Congratulations, proudly presented to Jones Magnet Middle School Middle School Boys Soccer Champions 2025."
All right, I'm gonna step out of the way for just a quick second so that parents can take photos. I'm gonna jump in now. Now, everybody look at me. All right, Mr. Kilgore, you gotta smile too. There we go. Thank you.
All right, but before you all leave, and before we acknowledge the parents, administrators, and our guests in attendance for these athletes and these coaches, we would also like to recognize Richard Fortune, our HCS Director of Athletics, for his work with our middle school sports program. Mr. Fortune, please stand as well as... As well as the parents, administrators, and other guests who are here tonight to support our Jones students and coaches. Thank you all.
All right, thank you so much. Congratulations. All right, we're gonna continue in the area of sports, and I'm going to invite Justin Vias, our Athletic Director of Hampton High School, to join me at the podium. So, you go by Mr. Vias, Coach Vias, Coach, Coach, Coach is fine. I just wanna make sure I get it right. All right, well, Coach here has been named the Region 4A Athletic Director of the Year. Let's give him a round of applause. So, this distinguished recognition honors him for his outstanding leadership, dedication, and service in advancing athletic excellence and supporting our student athletes at Hampton High School. Throughout his tenure, Vias has demonstrated a deep commitment to fostering sportsmanship, teamwork, and academic achievement among our student athletes. His vision and leadership have significantly contributed to the success of the Crabber Athletic Program and to strengthening the school's connection with the broader Hampton community. So, at this time, I'm gonna ask you to join Mr. Kilgore up on stage.
A proud Hampton High School alum and former baseball coach, Justin Vias continues to exemplify the values of leadership, integrity, and dedication that define the Hampton tradition. His contributions are leaving a lasting impact on the school's athletic department, students, and community. On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair Ms. Jackson Alfonja, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, I'm honored to present this certificate and coin to you, and their certificate reads, "Certificate of Achievement from Hampton City School Board. Congratulations, proudly presented to Justin Vias, Hampton High School, 2025 Region 4A Athletic Director of the Year." Is there any administrators, staff, family, or community members in the audience tonight to support the coach? Please stand and be recognized.
I think he has a following.
Crabber can crush a crab. Yes, it can crush a crab.
Can crush a crab.
Can't crush a crab. All right. So, moving on, we are going to actually recognize several of our students. They are Kickitane High School students, and I'm gonna call them by name, and if you could join me down front by the podium. I've got Tyson Bowie, Naomi Brashear, Logan Brooks, Landon Clark, Andy Deep, Dane Dingoldy, Hannah Huff, Walter Kelly, Brelin LaPointe, Olivia McDaniel, Emma McVicker, Daniel Mormon, Calum Spatesmith, Kinley Thomas, Connor Francis, Alex Koetsda, and Alex Moore. Please join me down front. That's a good-looking group. All right. So, these students all received first-place ribbons at the 2025 Virginia State Fair. Collectively, 40 Kickitane students won a total of 55 ribbons, with 23 first-place ribbons, 13 second-place ribbons, and 19 third- and honorable mention ribbons. And two of our students, who I'll name shortly, also received the Purple Rosette and ribbons for Best in Show. So, as I call each student, we're gonna do things a little bit differently. I'm gonna call your name and what you won, and then I'm gonna have you join Mr. Kilgore on stage so that we can see who goes with the recognition. Okay? All right. So, first, we have Tyson Bowie. If you could join Mr. Kilgore on stage. And Tyson Bowie had a first-place ribbon for Origami. Next, we have Naomi Brashear for Flora Design. Go ahead up. Logan Brooks. Logan took two first-place ribbons for Shoebox Habitat and Yard Sign. Logan also won a second place in the category, in the category as well. Is Logan with us? Logan Brooks? All right, let's still give Logan a round of applause. Do we have Landon Clark? All right. So, Landon Clark was for Color Still Life. He also won Best in Show. Let's give him a round of applause. Do we have Andy Deep? Did I say your last name correctly? Perfect. All right. And Andy won for Color Scenic. Dane Dingoldy? Got, I said it wrong. Dingeldy. I'm so sorry. I even met with him beforehand. Dingeldy won two first-place ribbons for Yard Art and Digital Manipulation. Go ahead up. Hannah Huff? Is Hannah here? All right. Well, Hannah had two first-place ribbons for Trash to Treasure Sculpture and for Duck Tape Jewelry. Let's still give Hannah a round of applause. Walter Kelly? Is Walter here? All right. Walter was for Painting by Pet. Let's give Walter a round of applause. All right. Do we have Brelin LaPointe? Perfect. So, Brelin won two first-place ribbons for Veggies Come Alive and Jalapeno Peppers, and she also won a second-place ribbon. Let's give her a round of applause. Olivia McDaniel. Olivia won for Fig Preserves. Emma McVicker. Emma was for Cookie Bar. Do we have Daniel Mormon? All right. Well, we're still gonna recognize Daniel. Daniel was for the Virginia Outdoors. Let's give him a round of applause. Calum Spatesmith. Calum was for Human Interest. Let's give him a round of applause. Kinley Thomas. Kinley won first place and Best in Show for her printmaking and also a third-place ribbon. Let's give her a huge round of applause. Connor Francis. Connor won for Fiber Art. Alex Koetsda. Alex actually won three first-place ribbons. A black and white animal, Virginia Outdoors, and a color animal. Let's give him a round of applause. We have one more, but he was not able to join us this evening. Alex Moore, who won a first place for Black White Still Life and a second-place ribbon. Let's give Alex a round of applause. All right, Mr. Kilgore, take it away.
All right. I'm not gonna read the same certificate over and over, but when I call your name, if you could come over and get your certificate, please. On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, our Vice Chair Ms. Jackson Alfonja, the School Board, and our Superintendent, Dr. Haynes, I want to congratulate you and read this certificate that reads, "Certificate of Achievement from Hampton City School Board. Congratulations, proudly presented to..." And the first one, Tyson Bowie, Kickitane High School. Naomi Brashear. Landon Clark. Andy Deep. We have Dane Dingelde, or Dee. Brelin LaPointe. Olivia McDaniel. Emma McVicker. Calum Spatesmith. Kinley Thomas. Connor Francis. And last, Alex Koetsda.
All right, I'm gonna step to the side so anybody that would like to take a picture? All right. And then, I'm gonna ask if you all could little scrunch together for me.
As our winners exit the stage, we ask that all the supporters, including family, friends, staff, and community members, please stand to be recognized.
And actually, pause for just one moment. Would Ms. Robin Gordon and Ms. Karen Chang of Kickitane High School also please stand to be recognized? Those would be the teachers of these students. Perfect. Thank you so much. You can have a seat. All right. For our rec... For our next recognition, I'm getting a little tongue-tied now. For our next recognition, I'd like to ask Kara Hart from Bryan Elementary School, and as well as Principal Damian Collins, to please join me down front at the podium. I say Ms. Hart is not a stranger to school board recognition, so I'm not surprised to see her back up here again. The Virginia Department of Education's Office of Behavioral Health and Student Safety has named Bryan Elementary School a School Counseling Showcase School, recognizing the exemplary work of School Counselor Kara Hart. Bryan now serves as a model for other school counselors across Virginia to visit and learn from. And to earn this honor, schools must demonstrate a comprehensive counseling program that delivers regular lessons and services, uses data to guide decisions, and supports student growth and academics, career readiness, and social emotional development. Bryan Elementary was nominated by Carl Lamont, HCS Director of Student Development and Counseling, who submitted evidence showing student growth, program strengths, and the positive impact of the school's initiatives. Let's give them a round of applause.
Ms. Hart, Mr. Collins, if you could join me on stage? On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair Ms. Jackson Alfonja, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, I am honored to present this certificate and banner to you, and their certificate reads, "Certificate of Achievement from the Hampton City School Board. Congratulations, proudly presented to Bryan Elementary School, the DOE School Counseling Showcase School 2025-2026."
All right, I'm gonna get a picture.
And if there are supporters of Bryan Elementary in the audience tonight, please stand to be recognized.
See, teamwork. Teamwork makes the dream work. There you go. All right. Is everybody ready for the next recognition? We have 20 schools to honor. All right, and we're gonna break you up into groups because there's a lot of you here. So, we will honor 20 schools for their outstanding commitment to supporting military-connected students. We have 15 schools that are earning the Purple Star designation for the very first time, and five that are earning it for the second time, their second designation. And again, because we have so many schools to recognize, we will break them down into four groups. We'll recognize the first group of elementary schools who are earning their designation for the first time. So, at this time, I invite representatives from Aberdeen Elementary, Asbury Elementary, Basset Elementary, Bryan Elementary, Christian Elementary, and Forest Elementary to join me down front at the podium. Go on both sides. I'm friendly, I promise. I'm friendly, I promise. Alright, I'm gonna stop you right there. Perfect. Do you have everyone? Alright, so these schools have earned the Virginia Purple Star designation from the Virginia Department of Education and the Virginia Council on the Interstate Compact on Educational Opportunity for Military Children. This honor signifies their dedication to creating supportive environments for our military families, and each school will receive a commemorative Purple Star coin to proudly display, and they'll be listed as a Purple Star School on the Virginia Department of Education website. Purple Star Schools retain the designation for three years before being required to reapply. So, Mr. Kilgore, I'm gonna turn it over to you to do the schools individually.
You want me to call them all up, right?
No, you can go ahead and-
You wanna do it one at a time?
Yeah, so they can have their spotlight with their certificate.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna recognize each school one at a time to present their certificates, coins, and banner, and then Ms. Gore will take the photograph. So, would Ms. Royal, Principal and Assistant Principal Nicole Lewis from Aberdeen Elementary, please step forward? On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Ms. Jackson Afanjah, the Hampton School Board, the Superintendent Dr. Haynes, please accept this certificate of recognition, coin, and banner for the outstanding recognition. And the certificate reads, Certificate of Achievement from Hampton City School Board. Congratulations proudly presented to Aberdeen Elementary School, Purple Star School, First Designation 2025 through 2028. Next? Next would Ms. Franks and Assistant Principal Ms. Henderson Hopkins of Asbury Elementary School, please step forward. On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Ms. Jackson Afanjah, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, please accept this certificate of recognition, coin, and banner for this outstanding recognition. The certificate reads, Congratulations proudly presented to Asbury Elementary School, Purple Star School First Designation.
I say those of you back on the dais, you're in the picture too. Make sure you're smiling.
Alright. For Basset Elementary, I ask Principal Dr. Comback Smith and Ms. Lewis to please join me at the microphone. On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Ms. Jackson Afanjah, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, please accept this certificate of recognition, coin, and banner for this outstanding recognition. And the certificate reads, Congratulations proudly presented to Basset Elementary School, Purple Star School First Designation. For Bryan School, would Principal Collins and Assistant Principal Hammond please join me at the microphone?
Mr. Collins has his purple on.
On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Ms. Jackson Afanjah, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, please accept this recognition, and this certificate of recognition, coin, and banner for the outstanding recognition. Congratulations proudly presented Bryan Elementary School, Purple Star School First Designation.
Thank you.
Next would Dr. Onide, Principal and Assistant Principal, Mr. McDow of Christian Elementary School, please step forward. On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Ms. Jackson Afanjah, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, please accept this certificate of recognition, coin, and banner for this outstanding recognition. And the certificate reads, Congratulations proudly presented to Christian Elementary School, Purple Star School First Designation. And lastly, for this group, for Forest Elementary School, would Principal Dr. Dunbar and School Counselor, you're gonna have to help me with that.
Sheedle Anderson.
Sheedle.
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 Sheedle Anderson, please join me at the microphone. On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Ms. Jackson Afanjah, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, please accept this certificate of recognition, School Board coin, and banner for this outstanding recognition. And it reads, Congratulations proudly presented to Forest Elementary School, Purple Star School First Designation. Alright, so, actually now that they've all headed back, I'm gonna just say, if there's any staff members, school administrators, family members, or guests who have been here to support Aberdeen, Asbury, Basset, Bryan, Christian, or Forest, please stand to be recognized.
Alright, we're gonna go ahead and move on to our second group of elementary schools who are receiving recognition as a Purple Star School for their first designation. That would be Jackson Fundamental Elementary, Kraft Elementary, Moton Early Childhood Center, Patrick Elementary, Peak Elementary, and Phillips Elementary. I invite the representatives to the podium. Let's give these schools a round of applause for their first-time designation. I would just go ahead and call them up one at a time.
Okay, alright, that's fine. Would Mr. Williams, Principal, and Ms. Crisman Patton, School Counselor from Jackson Fundamental Elementary School, please come up on the stage with me? On behalf of Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Ms. Jackson Afanjah, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, please accept this certificate of recognition, coin, and banner for this outstanding recognition. And it reads, Congratulations proudly presented to Jackson Fundamental Elementary School, Purple Star School First Designation.
Congratulations.
Next, would Principal Robin Crump and Licensed Clinical Social Worker, Dr. Ganey of Kraft Elementary School, please step forward?
And I like how they're both in their purple. Ms. Kilgore?
On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Ms. Jackson Afanjah, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, please accept this certificate of recognition, coin, and banner for this outstanding recognition. And the certificate reads, Congratulations proudly presented to Kraft Elementary School, Purple Star School First Designation.
I don't know, Mr. Kilgore, I'm having a good time watching all the administrators try to roll the banners up back here.
For Moton Early Childhood Center, I ask Early Childhood Coordinator, Ms. Henshaw, and School Counselor, Ms. Twisdale, to step forward. On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Ms. Jackson Afanjah, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, please accept this certificate of recognition, coin, and banner for this outstanding recognition. And the certificate reads, Congratulations proudly presented to Moton Early Childhood Center, Purple Star School First Designation. Alright, for Patrick Elementary School, would Principal Ms. Meyer and Assistant Principal Ms. Rinaldi, please join me at the microphone? On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Ms. Jackson Afanjah, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, please accept this certificate of recognition, coin, and banner for this outstanding recognition. And the certificate reads, Congratulations proudly presented to Patrick Elementary School, Purple Star School First Designation. Next would Principal Mr. Richardson, Assistant Principal Ms. Osborne, and, um, let's see, Ms. Landry Rozier? Oh, is she? Okay. Of Peak Elementary School, join me on the stage. You all are here. On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Ms. Jackson Afanjah, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, please accept this certificate of recognition, coin, and banner for this outstanding recognition. The certificate reads, Congratulations proudly presented to Peak Elementary School, Purple Star School First Designation.
Come on, Mr. Richardson. Smile. There we go.
And last, but certainly not least, for this group, is Phillips Elementary School. Would Principal Mr. Kelly and Assistant Principal Dr. Dozier please join me by the microphone? On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Ms. Jackson Afanjah, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, please accept this certificate of recognition, School Board coin, and banner for this outstanding recognition. And the certificate reads, Congratulations proudly presented to Phillips Elementary School, Purple Star School First Designation. And we'd like to recognize any staff members, school administrators, or special guests who are here to support these schools, please stand and be recognized.
Alright, at this time, we're gonna recognize our secondary schools who are receiving that Purple Star School designation for the first time. So could I have representatives from Bethel High School, Hampton High School, and Lindsay Middle School, please join me down front at the podium? Let's give them a round of applause as they're walking around. You're purple. I like it.
So, could I ask Dr. Howard, Executive Principal, and Patrick McRae from Bethel High School, please join me? And on behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Ms. Jackson Afanjah, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, please accept this certificate of recognition, coin, and banner for this outstanding recognition. And the certificate reads, Congratulations proudly presented to Bethel High School, Purple Star School First Designation.
I'm giving the other schools down here a hard time for not wearing purple flowers.
Next, would Mr. Majid, Executive Principal, and Ms. Snyder of Hampton High School, please step forward? On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Ms. Jackson Afanjah, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, please accept this certificate of recognition, coin, and banner for this outstanding recognition. And the certificate reads, Congratulations proudly presented to Hampton High School, Purple Star School First Designation.
Mr. Majid was camera-ready up there the whole time, so I just started clicking away.
For Lindsay Middle, I ask Principal Mr. Hicks to join me at the microphone.
He said he has long arms. He really does.
That's right.
We're good.
Alright, best one yet. On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Ms. Jackson Afanjah, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, please accept this certificate of recognition, coin, and banner for this outstanding recognition. And the certificate reads, Congratulations proudly presented to Lindsay Middle School, Purple Star School First Designation. So, members in the audience tonight who are here to support Bethel, Hampton, and Lindsay, please stand and be recognized. And let's have a hand for all the schools who are receiving Purple Star designations for the first time.
Alright, so our final group of recognitions for our Purple Star Schools, it's like becoming a tongue-twister, so I apologize, is a group of five who have renewed their designation for the second time. So I'm gonna ask representatives from Armstrong School for the Arts, Burbank Elementary, Eaton Fundamental Middle, Jones Magnet Middle, and Kicktan High School to join me at the podium. Let's give them a round of applause.
So if I can ask Dr. Getty Suggs, Principal and School Counselor, Ms. Carol from Armstrong School for the Arts, to please join me on the stage? On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Ms. Jackson Afanjah, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, please accept this certificate of recognition, coin, and banner for this outstanding recognition. And the certificate reads, Congratulations proudly presented to Armstrong School for the Arts, Purple Star School Second Designation 2025 through 2028. Next, would Mr. Holmes, Principal, and Ms. Sims Elementary, or School Counselor of Burbank Elementary School, please step forward? On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair, Ms. Jackson Afanjah, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, please accept this certificate of recognition, coin, and banner for this outstanding recognition. And the certificate reads, Congratulations proudly presented to Burbank Elementary School, Purple Star School Second Designation 2025 through 2028.
Congratulations. Mr. Kilgore is going to get an award for how many times he's had to say Purple Star School.
For Eaton, uh, yeah, for Eaton Fundamental Middle School, I ask Principal Dr. Monroe and Assistant Principal Mr. Bain to please step forward. On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair Ms. Jackson Afanjah, the Hampton School Board and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, please accept this certificate of recognition, coin and banner for this outstanding recognition. And the certificate reads, congratulations proudly presented to Eaton Fundamental Fundamental Middle School, Purple Star School Second Designation. So would Principal Dr. Brzezinski and School Counselor Ms. Harvey Simmons of Jones Magnet Middle School, please step forward? On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair Ms. Jackson Afanjah, the Hampton School Board and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, please accept this certificate of recognition, coin and banner for this outstanding recognition. And the certificate reads, congratulations proudly presented to Jones Magnet Middle School, Purple Star School Second Designation. And the final recognition for the Purple Star Schools would be Kickitans Executive Principal Dr. Lucas and School Counselor Ms. Tyson. Please join me. On behalf of our Chair, Dr. Mason, Vice Chair Ms. Jackson Afanjah, the Hampton School Board and Superintendent Dr. Haynes, please accept this certificate of recognition, school board coin and banner for this outstanding recognition. And the certificate reads, congratulations proudly presented to Kickitans High School, Purple Star School Second Designation. So, staff members, school administrators or guests who are here to support these five schools, please stand and be recognized.
Mr. Kilgore, before we move on to our next recognition, I'd actually like Dr. Jennifer Oliver, our Director of Community and Government Relations, to please stand to be recognized. Dr. Oliver has not only been a huge support during that Purple Star application process, but she's to be commended for her work throughout the entire year supporting our military-connected students and families. With her support and the dedication of our schools, we are proud to share that for the very first time Hampton City Schools has been designated a Purple Star School Division, meaning 100% of our schools are now recognized as Purple Star Schools. This truly is a huge designation. There's only about a handful of school divisions in the Commonwealth that are designated as Purple Star Divisions. So that really does highlight the division's ongoing commitment to supporting our military-connected students and families. Let's give everybody a round of applause. So we have one last set of awards, but I'm going to actually ask Mr. Kilgore to return to his seat and have Dr. Mason proceed to the microphone to help with the next presentation. Hopefully he read the script. No, just kidding.
Do I pass you the certificates? Oh, yeah, that's right.
All right, so each year, the Virginia School Boards Association recognizes our board members, school board clerks and superintendents for their dedication, time and hard work in improving their boardmanship skills through the V S B A meetings, conferences, board development and training, and active involvement in the association. V S B A members earn credits for V S B A Academy Awards, which are based on participation from July 1 to June 30th each school year. There are five levels of awards with certificates and pins awarded for particular levels. The V S B A awards are presented annually to those individuals who meet the requirements. So at this time, I'm going to have Dr. Mason present the Silver Pin and Award of Excellence. So if Dr. Haynes would come forward for that. And I'm going to explain the Award of Excellence real quick before Dr. Mason presents Dr. Haynes his certificate and pin. So the Award of Excellence is for those members who earn 48 credits in two years. So congratulations to our Superintendent Dr. Raymond Haynes for earning the Award of Achievement. And you may present him the certificate.
I didn't know that. I knew that part.
You knew that part?
Yes, 48 credits in two years, yes. So, Dr. Haynes, it's truly a pleasure to present to you your Silver Pin and your Award of Excellence. Congratulations.
He's getting there.
Dr. Haynes gets to now stand at the microphone to help pass out the awards to the other board members. Dr. Mason's going to take a seat.
Dr. Haynes is getting there. He'll be up to 80 pretty soon.
He's going to assist in presenting the remainder of the awards.
Yeah.
All right, so the Award of Recognition, that is given to members who earn 15 credits in a year. So congratulations goes out to School Board Clerk Ms. Joyce Charbonneau for earning 15 credits in one year and the Award of Recognition. So we're going to go back to the Award of Excellence and that Silver Pin. As Dr. Mason shared, because he said he knew, the Award of Excellence are for those members who have earned 48 credits in two years. So you passed your quiz, that is correct, sir. So congratulations to Dr. Tina Banks Gray, Ms. Ann Cherry and our Vice Chair Ms. Stephanie Jackson Afanjah for earning the Award of Excellence. Would you join Dr. Haynes? Would you all like a picture with Dr. Haynes? No?
Did she say no?
She's like the picture person. She said no. Oh, hold on, my pen is not even on. All right, the next Award of Honor is for those members who earn 66 credits in two years. So congratulations goes out to our school board members, Mr. Jason Samuels and Dr. Reginald Woodhouse for earning the Award of Honor. All right, would you all like a picture? Dr. Woodhouse is like walking away. All right, our final recognition this evening is the highest honor. It is the Award of Distinction. The Award of Distinction goes to members who have earned 84 credits in two years. This award goes to school board members, Mr. Joseph Kilgore and our Chair, Dr. Richard Mason.
Say, I go to meetings.
And for those in the audience that don't understand, like that is a huge honor for our school board and our clerk and our superintendent. It does take a lot of time and effort to go to all of the trainings, the meetings, the conferences that are outside of their family lives, their work lives, and just their school board tasks that they do around here. So let's give them all a big round of applause. And Chair Mason, that concludes tonight's recognitions. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Let's give our, all of our recognitions a round of applause tonight. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to tonight's consent agenda. We have 3.01 Personnel Report 25-17-17, minutes from a school board meeting of October 15, 2025. 3.03 Release from compulsory attendance and religious exemption. 3.04 Release from compulsory attendance and religious exemption. 3.05 School Board Consent to Receipt of Donations for October of 2025. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Ms. Afanjah that we accept tonight's consent agenda and seconded by Mr. Samuels. Any discussion from the board? Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Afanjah?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye, motion carried. So that takes us to item number four, Superintendent Staff Reports, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Haynes.
Thank you, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Jackson Afanjah, members of the board, vision leadership team and the Hampton community. For our first presentation this evening, Dr. James Harris, our Chief Academic Officer, will provide an overview and update on the Hampton Captains Program and the partnership with Christopher Newport University, where I am a proud alumnus and captain for life.
Love it.
Joining him this evening to offer remarks at Christopher Newport University, President William Kelly. Now, I know my board is very fond of President Kelly, so much so that it makes me a little uncomfortable.
That's okay.
Very glad to have President Kelly here with us tonight as well. Additionally, Dr. Veronica Hurd, Director of the Academies of Hampton, and Mr. Brandon Jones, Senior Director of School Partnerships and Outreach at Christopher Newport University, will also be presenting this evening. Dr. Harris.
Good evening, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Jackson Afanjah, members of the Hampton School Board, Dr. Haynes and the Hampton community. This evening, we are excited to present Hampton City Schools' first four-year named education partnership with Christopher Newport University, better known as Hampton Captains. As you know, our North Star is the portrait of a Hampton graduate, and our ultimate goal is to ensure that every young person graduates college, career and life-ready. While we are continuing to strengthen our partnerships with several four-year universities across the region, we are especially proud of the powerful named partnership we have developed with Christopher Newport University. It is now my honor to introduce President William Kelly of Christopher Newport University, who will share remarks this evening. President Kelly serves as the sixth president of Christopher Newport University and is nationally respected educator and military leader. A lifelong public servant, he brings nearly four decades of distinguished service in the U.S. Coast Guard. Prior to his appointment as president, Rear Admiral Retired Kelly served as the 42nd Superintendent of the U.S. Coast Guard Academy. Following President Kelly's remarks, Mr. Brandon Jones, Senior Director of School Partnerships and Outreach at Christopher Newport University, and Dr. Veronica Hurd, Director of the Academies of Hampton, will provide an overview of the named partnership. At the conclusion of the presentation, we will be happy to answer any questions you may have. Now, we welcome President William G. Kelly of Christopher Newport University.
Thank you, Dr. Harris and Chair Dr. Mason, Vice Chair Ms. Jackson Afanjah, Dr. Haynes. Always good to see you again, sir. It's always good to be with, with captains. Thank you so much for having us tonight. It was a pleasure and an honor to see just the vibrant community that you have and recognizing them on, on stage. I brought some folks with me tonight, sir. Um, I brought, I'm going to start right here, Tom Kramer, Dr. Rob Lang, I'm going to save you for the end. Mr. Curtis Davison, Betsy Robinson, and Brandon Jones will be up here in just a second. I also asked Michael Golden, Michael, stand up, please, if you wouldn't mind. Michael is a Bethel High grad. He is a senior at Christopher Newport University. He's a member of our Student Government Association. We had dinner last week with, with the leaders in student government and I asked Michael, went around the table and asked him what they were going to do. And Michael wants to get into education administration. And, and I know he's had the opportunity to meet Dr. Haynes. Michael is a, is a proud example of what a captain is and what a Hampton City High School graduate is. And I asked Michael to come with us tonight. I'm not sure he all knew what a school, school board meeting was all about, but he's learning because he's going to be up on stage one day, so I wanted to make sure he was here. Michael, thank you. So we appreciate the opportunity to be with the school board tonight to discuss two important initiatives that are underway at Christopher Newport University. First, I'd like to provide just a very brief update. I know it's been a long day for everybody, but we are working on our strategic plan. We have instituted a strategic plan that we call our Strategic Compass, and it has four points. First and foremost, we're anchored in the liberal arts. We are a liberal arts university, but over 50% of our graduates graduate with a STEM degree, another 20% graduate with a business degree, and we're getting ready to cut the ribbon on the new Science and Engineering Research Center, 83,000 square feet right on campus. I had two representatives from Virginia Tech with us last week. They looked at the two-story drone lab, the maker spaces, the laboratories, and they looked at each other and they said, "We don't have anything like this at Virginia Tech." I said, "Can I quote you on that?" And they said, "Yes, you can." We also want to, to build a foundation to thrive. We know that to continue to increase the throughput of our university and be the best stewards of the money that the, that the moms and dads provide us for tuition and the state provides us is our, is our primary responsibility and my primary responsibility as a president. We want to create a stronger culture of inclusion and belonging on our campus. I believe we have everything in place at Christopher Newport University to be the most inclusive university in Virginia, and I look forward to welcoming students in from across the peninsula so that they can see that as well. And finally, we want to connect with our community. That's why we're here tonight. As a regional public university, as the finest regional public university in the state of Virginia, we have an obligation to serve the community which we live, and that is part of the reason why we're here tonight. And we're grateful to share the program that we're working on, and I know Dr. Haynes knows, knows a lot about this and he's already mentioned, he's a proud captain for life, but I always like to give him a shout out on that as well. Thanks to the engagement that we've already had just over the past year, we've increased by 50% the number of students who graduated from Hampton High Schools and came to Christopher Newport University. Let me say that again, in one year, students chose to go right up Warwick or Jefferson, to go to Christopher Newport University, but more importantly, to stay on the peninsula, to get a great education, and hopefully someday, much like Michael, put down roots and serve this community as graduates of Christopher Newport University. We're very, very proud of that. And so I'm excited about the new relationships that we're building. We have a brand new partnership with Hampton City Schools, and we call that the Hampton Captains Program. And I'd like to introduce Dr. Bran, not, not doctor, not yet, right, just Mr. Brandon Jones. He is, he is a, he is a graduate of Christopher Newport University, and he's C N U's Senior Director of School Partnerships, and he does an amazing job, not only on the peninsula but throughout the entire region. He's the lead architect of our new Hampton Captains Program, and Brandon and our team will work closely with Dr. Hurd and the great folks that you have here in Hampton. Before I turn it over to Dr. Hurd, I want to take an opportunity again to thank you, Dr. Mason, and all of the board members. Dr. Haynes, thank you and the Hampton City School Leadership Team for your continued support and our partnership. We truly value it. I would be remiss if I also didn't take this opportunity to thank Mayor Gray and all that he does to support our university and this entire city leadership. So with that, let me just turn it over now to, to Dr. Hurd, and, and we'll hear a little bit more about this amazing program. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be with you.
Thank you. Good evening, and again, thank you ever so much for the opportunity to present to you all. We are grateful, school board chairperson, Dr. Mason, vice chairperson, Mrs. Afanjah Jackson, Jackson Afanjah, school board members, Hampton community and of course, our superintendent. So I am excited to present to you our journey thus far with C N U, really grounding our work and building our partnerships to ensure all our young people are prepared for success in careers, lifelong learning and life. We've worked together across the year to really ensure that we backwards map the portrait of a Hampton graduate, and from that- of a Hampton graduate, and from that work and collaboration, what our students, our families, our staff, we now have a profile of an elementary scholar and a middle school scholar. When we think of the work that we're doing, as you heard from President Kelly, it is all about the community. So community connections is what is at the forefront of the work and the transformation. At the center of our community are the individuals that we're serving, the portraits of a Hampton graduate. But when you think of those portraits and what we're doing now, we're really helping them to matriculate successfully through their K-12 journeys, to help them to move along to their two-year, four-year, or ultimately into that industry. But the one thing that did not change was, A, that student at the center of this landscape, but then also the community that surrounds them. We want to invest in our community now with our young people, but then also connect our young people to the community, so as you heard earlier, that they remain in this community, but also to feel supported by our community. When you think about this transformational work that we're doing as a division, you've heard us tell you multiple times that it is driven by three transformational strands. We're looking at transforming teaching and learning. So what are students learning, how they're learning, and how are our educators preparing them for certain things? In addition to that, we're looking at transforming cultures, systems, and structures. And so that's the internal and external infrastructures that allow us to reimagine how we do school. But ultimately, when we think of this transformational work, there is this pillar that makes this work transformational, and that is our partnerships between schools and community. So when we think about our partnerships between schools and community, yes, that's with community members, business partners, but it's also with our students, our families, and our staff themselves, because we're all one large community. When we think about transforming partnerships between schools and communities, we have this formula per se of these characteristics that we're looking for. And so when we're saying we're in partnership with someone, we're looking at that shared vision. We have a shared vision between both organizations. We're also looking at this mutual accountability to one another. In addition to equitable collaboration, so it's not one-sided, open and ongoing communication. In addition to an asset-based approach where we're relying and we're exchanging resources between both organizations, innovation and flexibility, so we continue to evolve as the landscape evolves and the partnership deepens. We look at capacity building, so it's not reliant on one individual, but an organizational approach, and then ultimately, we stay focused on our core business, which is our students at the center. Now, we have various partnership bases, but as we look at what that partnership base represents, we look at what it is doing in our infrastructure. So when you look here, you see that we have some partners who are fully immersed, and when you look at that fully immersed partnership, it is basically looking at the embeddedness into our organization and within their organization. When you look at small learning community co-designers, those are individuals who are helping to go co-design the learning environments, whether that's a small learning from a grade level or from our academy perspective. In addition, we have learning experience co-designers, and those are individuals who may be working alongside us with a particular project. For instance, the Living Library, we had co-designers known with the main library and then also Hampton University. We have strategic partners, and those are individuals that come to help us. They're consultants, they give us feedback on whatever it is we may be able to, we're trying to resolve or move forward. In addition to that, we have contributors. People may come in, speak to our young people, share that knowledge or share knowledge with our teachers. And then we have event representatives, and those might be individuals that go to an expo and set up a booth and give us knowledge in that particular setting. So as you can see, all of them have equal value to what the goal or the task is at hand, but that infiltration into the organization is what makes it different. So when you think about Hampton City Schools and what we're doing here, our primary driver is this immersion, and where we're going with that is our name partnership with Christopher Newport University. So one of the things that we want you to notice when you're looking up here is this element of collective impact. And so when you look at Hampton City Schools, our mission to ensure academic excellence. Then when you look at Christopher Newport University, I've highlighted educational and cultural opportunities. So then when you come over one more step and you see the Academies of Hampton, it really is that success in careers and lifelong learning for our students. So when you look at this at first glance, you already see that our missions are compatible with one another. It's not one forcing something else, it naturally comes together. But when you intentionally bring those missions together and have a unified mission, this is what it looks like from our lens. And so our partnership mission is to empower students to achieve their academic and career aspirations by fostering a collaborative K-16-plus educational pathway. Together, we aim to bridge the transition to post-secondary institutions and career, pro-educational equity, and cultivate the next generation of informed, skilled, and engaged citizens. So our mission through this partnership is driven right here. As you heard earlier, this mission is upheld by an educational partnership, better known as the Hampton Captains. It has three pillars that drive our partnership. That is programmatic elements from a K-12 perspective, where it's creating collegiate opportunities for young people to engage with CNU, but then also for us to have different learning opportunities such as biz talk and things of that nature. It also is looking at that K-16-plus pipeline. How are we ensuring that what our students are learning now is helping them to prepare for their post-secondary journeys, and then ultimately that industry they will enter into, or what that trajectory looks like for the young person? And then finally, it's leadership development from a K-12 perspective, not only from the lens of our students and making sure our students have leadership opportunities, but then also working with our staff and others to prepare them for leadership through a youth development lens. So again, when we just break this down, and I won't go too far in it, but this is just highlighting the programmatic elements, and when we're saying programmatic. So partnering with Christopher Newport University, they are engaging with us in various ways through programs. Those programs help to create career awareness, they help us to look at post-secondary pathways, but they're also helping us to strengthen efficacy for our students, to help them see them in spaces that they may not see themselves in spaces as of yet. Again, when we're looking at this K-16-plus pipeline, we want to make sure that not only are we aligned with industry, but we're also aligned with our post-secondary institutions to make sure that our students are ready to be received by them, to ultimately get them the skills that are necessary to move not only them, our students forward, but also our industries and community forward. Finally, as I mentioned before, leadership development, again, is at the heart that we're doing, and this is not just leadership development, but a youth leadership model, where we create spaces to elevate the voices of our students, for them to own their education, move their communities forward, and then ultimately to find their voice and be empowered by what they're able to do themselves and in a collection with others. One of the things we've said to you time and time again is when we look at Masstaplan 2.0, it has various pillars that uphold our work. Again, when we're looking at Masstaplan 2.0, it isn't vital that what we do is community-connected and co-developed. It is also vital that it's family-involved, and we're creating a space for our families to be involved and move the work forward. Curriculum-integrated, so our students all have access to this. We want it to be fun and feel different, but then also, ultimately, we want to make sure that we are raising the voices of our students in the spaces that they're within. At this time, I would now like to turn it over to Mr. Jones.
Good evening, Chairperson, Dr. Mason, Vice Chairperson Ms. Jackson Afonja, school board members, Superintendent Dr. Haynes, and the viewing community. As stated earlier, my name is Brandon Jones, and I serve as the Senior Director of School Partnerships and Outreach at my alma mater, CNU. I'm honored and excited to be a part of today's presentation, so that I can share a look into our educational partnership and talk about some of the great work occurring because of that partnership. It would be remiss of me not to share that from the very beginning of this partnership, it's been based on collaboration. From our beginning conversations, we sincerely believe that before introducing any idea regarding how something should be done or what should be done differently, it was absolutely integral to solicit input from those stakeholders that would be impacted, our students, our staff, and our school leadership. You see, I'm saying the word, using the word "our" already. Dr. Hurd just shared some of the goals regarding our partnership, and I wanted to peel back some of the layers so that you all have a good idea of the work that has happened, that is happening, and what will happen. She noted that there are currently three distinct prongs, I think she referred to them as pillars, of our partnership. There's a programmatic, there's a pipeline alignment, and again, it's leadership development for students and staff. Much of our work to this point has occurred in the programmatic and leadership sectors, with this focus on increasing authentic student voice through development and collective learning. Some of the questions that have guided our work thus far are, how can we increase student voice by working together to reimagine existing structures and processes? How can we leverage the resources of a leading Virginia school district? Align them with the resources of a leading Virginia university? And further enhance student preparedness for post-graduation success? And then how do we build structures and processes that retain that institutional knowledge when people leave, when students graduate, when staff turns over? In other words, how do we create something that is sustainable? This is our answer, this is the star of our answer, our Lead Ambassador Program and the elevation of student voice. We had a revisioning of the ambassador program, and I wanted to kind of point you to our mission. Our mission statement is to empower students to lift, engage, achieve, and most partly probably do, LEAD as an acronym, Leading With Purpose, Serving With Heart, and connecting their schools and communities through action and collaboration. This here, you saw this, I think you saw this during our very first presentation, this is our first initial group, and these are lead ambassadors. And I want to bring your attention to the fact that there are about 40 of those students, but their task is to go back to their schools and implement change based on the work that we've done. So their work is as a leader, just to shift from what they're thinking about doing for themselves and doing it for their school, which in turn will then transform the division itself and within. So we had a revisioning of the ambassador process, the program. This is what it kind of looks like. We wanted to empower students to grow as leaders and strengthen their school culture and communities, build a culture of action, achievement, and support across grade levels, elevate the voices of their peers to create structures for service, connection, and impact, and then co-design a K-12 structure to elevate that student voice we just talked about through service, connection, and impact. Some of the ways that happens, the way that looks, are we have Division Monthly Program Days, where students are taught how to prepare for their next, whether that be college, whether that be employment, whether that be the military. So during these sessions, we talk about certain things to prepare them for that. Also, leadership application, what skills do we identify that young people need to be to be successful after graduation? Not those things necessarily that occur in a classroom, but how do we help them with those soft skills or those transferable skills, or whatever they're referring to it nowadays as, but those skills that transfer across different contexts to help them be successful elsewhere. And then Bring-A-Buddy, I think we talked a little bit about a minute ago about kind of sustainability. How do we then train that next generation of ambassadors to be so, all right? Also, we wanted to build accountability structures. Those are important, right? These young people need to be able to tap into those leaders in their schools. So we have meetings that we've worked on establishing between them, their executive principal, the academy principal, the coach, and ambassadors, a nice team of people to support them in their mission of elevating student voice. And the way that looks, I thought through legacy projects. What are they doing at their schools to elevate overall student voice in the school district? How does that feed into a bigger picture? And how's that connected to other leads, which is why we bring them all together from different schools? And then also, that K-12 ambassador program. Really quickly, there are some things that we wanted to decide, that we wanted to make uniform, right? There are certain things, while adjusting for school identity, that we wanted to make sure were the same across the board. Recruitment. How do we know how we recruit those students? What are we expecting of an ambassador, right? Calendars. We should know at any time of the year what we're doing and what school was happening at. And then a common job description. What does it look like to be an ambassador or a lead ambassador? I think it's important to note that with this, we engaged all those stakeholders that we mentioned, again, the students, staff, and leadership teams as well, to determine what that looked like as well. We also wanted to make sure that we had a hybrid of post-graduation preparation, life skills and development. We want a K-12-tiered ambassador program with lead ambassadors being the pinnacle of that program, right? So how do we have that and have accountability structures and sustainability to ensure that those students, if that lead ambassador is the pinnacle of what we want, if that is aligned with what the portrait of a Hampton graduate is, how do we help young people get to that point? What does that look like, right? So this is kind of how it looks, this is what it would be. Future ambassadors, how are we preparing young people all the way back to elementary school to be prepared with, by the time they're seniors or juniors, to be lead ambassadors, right? So our guiding thought, based on our collective expertise about this, was if the lead ambassador role, with all of its expectations, is ultimately aligned with the portrait of a Hampton graduate, we can then backwards plan all the way to kindergarten and perhaps beyond, strategically place opportunities along the way that prepares every student to eventually be a lead ambassador, along with the necessary structures and supports along the way. As you can see, even though these are kind of broad categories, these are the plans and experiences that we have for those young people by the time they enter elementary school, to the time they graduate, to prepare them to be a lead ambassador, which again is equitable to what we consider the Hampton portrait of a graduate. What about next steps? There's some of the things that we've talked about, right? Because I, we'll talk about the partnership in a minute, but there's some things that we wanted to look at to make sure that we sustain the program. Lead ambassador program strength and implementation, scholarship funding. What about those students that graduate from Hampton and do want to attend CNU? What can we do to make that happen? Now, we all understand that we don't, every student will not want to go to college, and every student that goes to college will not want to go to CNU, but for those students that feel like this is the place for them, what can we do, what obstacles can we eliminate to make sure that they have a place like Mr. Golden does at CNU? What can we do on our end? So scholarship funding, there are some monies that we've already identified, kind of as a temporary fix until we figure out what, how we solicit funding to support the program all the way through. However, there are some scholarship monies for students that graduate even this year if they decide that CNU is where they want to go, if they graduate from a Hampton City High School, all right? We also have some preliminary talks about leadership credit and certification. For the program that we have for the K-12, for the lead ambassadors, how do we get them some college credit that they can take no matter where they decide to go? So there's some preliminary talks about that and what that could be, at no cost to them and their families, right? Program enhancement and continuation. How do we continue to look at different ways that we can be involved in Hampton City Schools? Not just about the Hampton Captains Program, or not just about the lead ambassador program, but about how do we immerse ourselves and have a constant presence in Hampton City Schools, right? Preliminary discussions, like I said, have been held about that as well. Commitment to graduate, I've been a part of that. I've been honored to be a part of that. I've been a part, we've been a part of my future, my journey. I'll be speaking at the Citizen of the Month, end of next month. Biz Talk. We hosted the Biz Talk last year, and we'll do it annually for the next couple of years, where we welcome 400 sophomores on campus and align that experience with career pathways from the public health sector, public service sector, forgive me. And then again, a regional approach about the K-16 pipeline. How do we get people to play nicely in the sandbox together, considering we all have ultimately the goal and the welfare of our young people at heart? I think we are also possessed by this thing, this kind of idea about why not us, and I've used this with our students when we work with them. Why can't we be the ones that facilitate that change? Why can't we be the one to show in a model of how those places work together for the betterment of young people in the community itself? I'm for that. Much of the existing structure that exists between us, you, your steering partners already, how do we collect that? How do we work with that to get to that common goal? But also this, our partnership is a continuum. The idea is not that I'm here or that we're here all the time, but how do we build sustainability and the nature of partnership by co-designing and building structures and processes this year, co-leading that next year, and then what I put in quotations, the handoff the year after that. The idea is that we work our, my way, out of a, not out of a job, right? But out of the active role in the partnership, right? So that people that are here, the staff, the academy's team, the schools, the young people are and have a structure that doesn't need us as a partner leading that point. So it's all about kind of that staggered handoff. This is what it would look like. So I've talked a little bit about kind of sharing what has happened, what will happen, and this is kind of a timeline to look at, really just in a year, the amount of work that's been done to get to where we are. It started in November, where we had the first partnership onboarding interest meeting. Biz Talk followed immediately after that in February. In March, we started listening to the K-12 Ambassador Focus Groups, where I talked about we solicited input about how we can do our job better. And the Academies of Bethel CNU site visit with Dr. Howard and her team over there in Bethel, when we all came together to talk about the potential of this partnership. A formal agreement, the education partnership, was signed in May of 2025. In June, we had 40 to 50 of our your lead ambassadors on campus for a two-day institute, where we, a retreat where we developed that job description that we talked about, what we want to see an ambassador, and most importantly, some of those legacy projects. If you notice, if, well, if you don't, you don't. Some of our lead ambassadors are 10th graders, some are 11th and 12th. So some of those 12th graders, when we talk about legacy, what does that look like? They may not see the changes they talked about in a school, but can they leave a structure? Can they leave a way for those people that come after them? And that's what we talk about when we mean legacy. Lead Ambassador Retreat, and then we looked in July of this year, we started working with your principals, middle and high, to determine what those legacy projects look like. Those young people, those lead ambassadors, worked with them to talk about how they wanted to see their voice articulated in schools. Lead Ambassador Program Implementation, we began our program days. We meet with your young people once a month, basically on average, where we took a look at certain topics, preparing them for the next, but then also preparing them for going back to their schools and leading others to their next, which is probably an important distinction. And then we'll have some talks that are upcoming about the pipeline, exploratory conversation And then we'll have some talks that are upcoming about the pipeline, exploratory conversation about that in December of this year. So, if you see here, there are a couple of pictures of some of the things that we've done. You see our President Kelly on the left, that was the Bethel site visit. In the middle with the big theater, that was us for Biz Talk, when we had all of you sophomores here from the, again, the public service sector. And the top right was your Leadership Institute, where young people were working with their principals to determine their legacy projects and how they elevate student voice. In the middle, right onto that, underneath that four hundred and fifty engagement hours is me. We created a dorm room. For those of you that came to my Future My Journey, we had a dorm room so that young people can begin to envision what it would look like to be a college student. There on the right, you see, that was also at Bethel for the site visit. The bottom left was a Biz Talk, but this was along that track for culinary services there, for public health. And so, young people were able to talk to our chef and her crew to see how it looks differently. And you have an idea sometimes with the chef about, now with TV and everything, right? Chefs are this glorious, famous thing, but then it looks different in everyday life. And so they were showing it could look different in that way. The bottom is our Study Abroad Office from Biz Talk, and on the right is our first, one of our program days, with your, with your lead ambassadors and the five ambassador buddies they brought with them to, again, build sustainability. So, in conclusion, I wanted, I started off by saying that I wanted to share what has happened, what is happening, and what will happen, and this timeline, this timeline captures that, right? And what will hap, this timeline captures the big items. What it doesn't show, of course, are all the hours and the time and collaborative brain energy and the heart work that everyone on both sides of this partnerships has committed to this effort. In closing, I would like to say, as I've said from the beginning, the power of this partnership is just beginning, but the true power in our partnership lies in those future unknown ways that we will continue to support and enhance each institution's ability to prepare young people for their next, together, one community, one transformation. Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Excellent presentation. Questions or comments from board members? Ms. Afonja?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Exceptional, just very exceptional, very, just blown away by all of the work. You guys have been extremely, extremely busy in the last, in the last year, and the outcomes are certainly there to prove it. When President Kelly spoke about the fifty percent increase in enrollment from Hampton City School students to Christopher Newport, so that's awesome. Definitely know that what we're doing and what you guys have been doing is working and working well. So we know it'll only get even better from there. I'm really excited, Dr. Hurd, about how you broke down the partnership levels just for the division, before we even got into this great embedded partnership that we are developing here, but just to be able to see where partners throughout our community, how they can contribute to HCS, to the academies in different ways. Because we, you know, we call everybody partners because that's what we feel in partnership, but the different ways that you showed us today, that they are contributing and can contribute, the way that was broken down, I thought, was very relevant, very nicely done. I think that, you know, this partnership just shows a lot of collaboration, for one, but I'm really excited about the student voice and the students being so, just such a part of this entire process. I think the work that you guys have done around that is exceptional, getting all these students to the table, getting these ambassadors selected, getting them to the place that they are currently, doing so much great work already, you know, and it's just the beginning. So I just think it's just awesome. I really like just how we renamed K through sixteen plus versus just saying, you know, what we normally, K through twelve and beyond or whatever. It just really speaks to that continuum and there not really being a break, but from the beginning all the way to wherever you end up, we know we all have to be together on that. And I think it's just going to be so rewarding for our students. I think they couldn't choose a finer university by coming to Christopher Newport, but now we know for sure that that's the case, because we've had this opportunity to engage with you and to develop this partnership with you. I just think it's awesome, incredible, great work on your part, great work.
Comments from other board members?
I'd just say, that was an outstanding presentation. I can't say it better than our vice chair, but very motivational, just, there was just so much good about that, that was great, thank you.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Yes, thank you so much for the presentation, I thought it was wonderful. I was really excited about the portion where you mentioned the scholarship funding, because I was going to ask you a question concerning that, but you answered some of the question that I was going to ask, but can you share with me and the rest of the board a little bit more about where the scholarship funding may come from and how you're going to seek out the students that you will be able to give those scholarships to?
Oh, we're talking about CHEV. So, so yes, we, last year, in anticipation of us having this program and creating this program, we started to already look for funds, right? Because we knew that eventually, I guess for context, my part, my role prior to this was leading a community captains program with Newport News Public Schools, and that's a college prep program. If students go through that high school portion, then they are then eligible for certain amounts of scholarships. Monies are received from the Commonwealth, from the city of Newport News, and then also from campaign funds on campus as well. With us, with this, knowing that we didn't yet have that foundation to request those funds, because we had yet not built the program, we started finding out kind of ways that we knew we could recruit students and help students that wanted to come there. And so, with CHEV, the Council on Education in Virginia, we reply for PIV grants, which is Pell Eligible, to increase Pell Eligible students coming, but because of the schools and the target list of those schools, all Hampton High Schools are all on that list. We got certain monies for scholarships specifically for anybody from the peninsula, meaning Newport News and/or Hampton. But in my mind, we have our funding stream for that, so a lot of what we could use, in my mind, and I don't want to talk too far ahead of that, is that we have monies available from that for students coming from the list of schools that we know we wanted to increase enrollment from. And Hampton schools are all on that list, so that money from CHEV is sitting there waiting for some students that decide that, yes, hey, school is there, Hampton is, students from Hampton do want to come to CNU. And at that point, as Dr. Lang, who's our dean of admission, stated, if they come from Hampton, then there are ways that we can then assign that money to those students as well. What that looks like would depend on individual cases and the student's background, obviously there's some things that pay into that, into that, into that, but that idea is that that's one way that we can at least, until we establish longer-term funding, have something to help students that decide that now is the year that I want to go and attend this.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that, that's wonderful.
Mr. Samuels?
Thank you, Chairman Mason, I saw, as, great presentation. And I would like for us to go back to slide twenty, and there's the action item, build a culture of action, achievement, and support across grade levels. And as we're looking at a culture of action, we also consider a culture of inclusiveness. As you know, the college was known as the Ivy College of the Peninsula, so which created several barriers for our minority students. So my question is that we're talking about building a culture of action, we also must now talk about a bill, building a culture of inclusiveness, if you want to recruit students that are attending Hampton City School, because approximately sixty-four percent of our students are minority students. So what are some of the things that Christopher Newport is doing to build that culture of inclusiveness, when you're talking about scholarships, recruitment pipeline, and so forth? Because that is very important to me as a board member, and as a parent.
Brandon does a lot of that work, so that's, that's an important question.
It is.
Newport News is forty-four percent African-American, and the majority of the students there come from what would be underrepresented minorities, and Hampton as well. When I came into this job three years ago, I looked around, and the vast majority of our students came from Northern Virginia or the Richmond suburbs. Those are great places, and we want to continue to attract those students. We need to increase the diversity of our student body, and we are working in that direction over the last two years, the diversity of our student body has increased. We also want to increase the diversity of our student body with out-of-state students. We want to look at all aspects of diversity on our campus. One of the things that I mentioned, and I'm glad it became part of our strategic plan, and this was not my doing, but the doing of over two hundred people on our campus, was to ensure that we become the most inclusive campus in Virginia. We want every student, every faculty member, every staff member, every visitor to our campus who walks on board and says, I feel like I belong here, I can see myself here, and I'm included here. So one of the things that I did, and this is a challenging point in time in our nation's history to do this, but I developed the President's Council on Inclusive Excellence, right? And our efforts are to carry out and oversee what we're going to do within our strategic plan. And that strategic plan goes across the board, right? It's connecting with our communities, Hampton, Newport News, the South Side. And what I've found, just in my short time here, is that when we just open up our doors and put the mat out and say, you're welcome to come here, you're welcome to come visit our campus, see what we do, see how we engage with folks, right? And I can see myself there. I know it's a hard thing to do, whether it's from a faculty perspective, a student perspective, or a staff perspective, to ensure that we represent the community that we live in, but that's our obligation as a regional public university, to do that very thing. We're not the University of Virginia, we're not William &amp; Mary, and we're not Randolph-Macon. We are a regional public university. One of the real telling challenges I had is, I actually talked to a, spoke with a community, a higher education leader in the Hampton Road region, who thought we were a private institution. After the third time this individual said that, I said, we're a public university. And this person was shocked, because we present ourselves, and we have presented ourselves for many years as a private institution. There's benefits to that, but as you pointed out accurately, there's barriers to that too. So we're working to, to walk that fine line, to be that great university that is the finest regional public university in the state, and we believe can be in the nation. But we, in order to do that, we have to be the most inclusive university as well that welcomes in students from all walks of life.
Reverend President Kelly, thank you for sharing that, appreciate that.
Thank you, I appreciate your question.
And if I would, I'll add it from a personal standpoint. I graduated from CNU, and I'm telling myself now, but I graduated in the year two thousand, many moons ago.
You're still young.
My knees don't say it, but thank you, many moons ago, and it was a completely different university then than it is now. I absolutely love the university that I worked for, because it's different than when I was a student there. Another thing that we didn't talk about, it's not just about getting students there, but it's ensuring that they stay, right? Retention is a big piece, it's not a revolving door, it's not about numbers, it's about relationships.
That was on my question, but I didn't want to.
Absolutely, so, one of the things, and my assistant director is here, Ms. Betsy Robinson, her goal for our Community Captains Program in Newport News is to make sure that students that come to college feel acclimated, that they're supported, that there's a structure to them that they can report to. So when they come, their expectations, they have to remain involved with that program. The key to that, though, is that when they come, they're now CNU students. Same thing would be for my, for our students that came from Hampton. I would love for them to be involved, and I can plug them into an existing structure that supports students. We boast eighty-nine percent retention rate from our students. We graduated our very first student cohort from college last year, and the idea is that we, they could plug right into an existing structure that's built on ensuring that they feel comfortable, included, that they feel that it's for them, and that they're supported along that way towards their end. So, that's kind of my personal note with that.
Appreciate that, Matt.
Thank you very much. I'm not even going to look her way, because I know Ms. Cherry has something to say. Ms. Cherry?
Thank you, I don't know how you figured that out, Mr. Chair, but I just want to say how excited I am about this program. I tell everybody about this, everybody who will listen, because it is just exciting. It's first-class, it's different, it's unique, it's creative, and it speaks volumes for not where we are, but where we want to go. And just a couple of things, my fellow board member, Mr. Samuels, was talking about being inclusive, which is, which is very important, but I remember at the first football game for CNU, Delegate Joanne Ward and I were in the president's box, and she said to me, she said, I am so excited about Christopher Newport University. She's a graduate. She said, but I'm not talking about Christopher Newport University of years past, I'm talking about this Christopher Newport University. And as we stood there, I remember there was a football player, I don't know if he was a wide receiver or a running back, who had transferred from either Norfolk State, President Kelly? It was Norfolk State. And he was out there playing. Then I looked at the cheerleaders, which you have to have four hundred of them. I've never seen that many cheerleaders in my life. They are as diverse as they can be, and sometimes, you know, a lot of power is in, you know, talk about point of advertising, it's in people who have actually seen and been there. And all of us on this board know Annette Monroe Martin, and her granddaughter is one of the cheerleaders at Christopher Newport. So I got to see how inclusive everything was at that university, and it is a change, it's a big change. I witnessed it. Secondly, I want to talk a little bit about understanding your community. Now, you talk about being one community, Mr. Superintendent, but we got to see that on Saturday, did we not? When Brandon Jones showed up to an event Hampton City Schools we sponsored called Tissues for Teachers, he did not have to do that. And he showed up with items in hand, did he not? So that told me then, that community piece goes beyond those walls of Christopher Newport and the walls of Hampton City Schools. And lastly, when President Kelly talks about being proud of that fifty percent increase, I can tell you, he means it. Because again, when we went to that game, we were supposed to be going up to the elevator to his box, and he's talking about the fifty percent increase, and he won't stop talking about it. And I'm trying to get up there just so I can watch the game and eat a shrimp, but he won't stop talking about it. So when he says that, it is genuine. So I just want to thank all of you for everything you've done to bridge this community and bridge this gap. Thank you.
Dr. Mason Gray?
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. No questions. I just want to say that I would like to thank President Kelly, thank you so much for taking the time and your busy evening to come out, Mr. Jones, Dr. Hurd for the presentation. I want to express that I truly look forward to all the future endeavors. It's so exciting that we have with CNU, and thank you all for spending your evening with us this evening. I'm excited, and I look forward to all the collaboration that we have that's coming up. Thank you so much.
I do want to say, we do have one of our lead ambassadors right over there, so I just wanted to make sure we shouted her out.
Thank you all for a wonderful presentation and a wonderful partnership. And we talk about transformational learning and education, this is truly a, an example of what that truly means. And we talk about one community, one transformation, excellence with intentionality, it's seen within this program, so thank you, and I'm excited in terms of where this is going to take our students within Hampton City Schools, but also where it's going to take our community. And this is truly a model for others to look at and grow from. So thank you very much. Excellent job, President Kelly. Thank you, Brandon, excellent. Dr. Haynes?
Trying to get myself together, I'm so proud of my university and President Kelly. Thank them once again for that great partnership. For our final presentation, Dr. Michael Thornton will present the business and finance reports for September twenty twenty-five.
Good evening, Chairman Mason, Vice Chair Jackson Afonja, school board members, Dr. Haynes. I'm glad I don't have a presentation that's intended to captivate you, because I think you all have been elevated to a level that I could never get to. So again, I am like a proud uncle, having been here, you know, twenty years ago, to see where the division is now and where it's going. So again, I'm just excited to be here, to share with you, in the absence of your CFO, who is continuing on her leave, your monthly financial report for the month ending September thirty, twenty twenty-five, also the end of the first quarter of the current fiscal year. Your total operating revenues, including fund balance, of five point one million, totals sixty million, sixty point four million, representing just over eighteen percent of your budgeted operating revenues, your expenditures and encumbrances, total eighty point six million, representing about twenty-five percent of your total budgeted operating expenditures for the year. You have additional details on your revenue and expenditures through the first quarter, as well as a detailed listing of transfers through the month of September. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have at this time.
Any questions from board members?
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, that concludes Superintendent and staff reports.
All right, thank you very much. That takes us to item five point zero one, our Special Education Advisory Committee. Ms. Judge?
Ms. Judge?
Ms. Judge?
Good evening.
Hold on one second, Ms. Judge.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, I move that the appointment of the chair and vice chair of the Special Education Advisory Committee, that we know as CAC, be moved to action item 6.02.
Second.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's been moved and properly stated that we move those items with the CAC committee to, from deliberation to action. It's been seconded by Mr. Kilgore. Any questions or discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Alfonja?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
You'll need to unlock your iPhone first. Oh, my gosh. Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Hector Mason?
Aye. Motion carries.
Have Mrs. Judge, our Director of Special Education, to share the recommendations in regards to the CAC committee.
Absolutely. Good evening, Chair, Chairman Dr. Mason, Vice Chair Jackson Alfonja, School Board Members, Superintendent Mason, ooh, Superintendent Haynes, and the Hampton community. It's a late night. I'd like to thank you, and I'm pleased to introduce leadership for our CAC, our chairperson, Chef Ms. Hamlin, and also Vice Chair Ms. Barxstel. And we're excited to have them step up and step in to take the charge of leading our CAC for the upcoming school year and hopefully beyond. They're very vested in ed, in the education of our students with disabilities, and also to ensure, ensuring equitable and inclusive practices for our students.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So that takes us to the next item on our agenda, which is item number seven, which is items for action. And that would be, I'm sorry, item number six. I'm sorry. I scratched through that. But item number six, item 6.01, Student Discipline Matter 2025-6, and 6.02, Approval of the CAC Appointments.
Mr. Chair, for action item 6.1, I move to uphold the superintendent's recommendation in the matter of student discipline number 2025-TAC-06.
Second.
It's been properly moved by Mr. Kilgore and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we uphold the superintendent's recommendation of student discipline matter 2025-6. Any discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Alfonja?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Samuel?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. All right. And so for item 6.02, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to approve, I'd like to move for the approval of the CAC appointments.
Second.
All right. It's been properly moved by Ms. Alfonja that we approve the CAC appointments, and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse. Any discussion? Ms. Charbonneau, will you please call for the vote?
Ms. Alfonja?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye.
Dr. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye. Motion carries. That takes us to item number seven on the agenda, hearing of any delegations or presentations of any written communications or petitions, and we do have one. So Ms. Charbonneau, will you please read the protocol?
Citizens are invited to address the school board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the school board, can you please complete the form and give it to clerk by 6:45 PM on the day of the meeting. Each individual will have three minutes to speak. At the end of your time, you will hear a buzzer. All comments shall be directed to the school board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the school board with decorum on policy issues. Comments shall relate to agenda items or matters remaining to the business of duty or duties of the school board. Speakers' comments on individual, speakers' comment on individuals at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and/or defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the school board, the superintendent, nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers about individuals. Presentations of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifesto, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the school board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the school board's opportunity to listen to the speakers. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to superintendent for research and response. The superintendent may report back on such matters as the subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The school board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
All right. Only speaker we have tonight is Ms. Brenda Marks.
Good evening, Chair Mason, Vice Chair Alfonja, Board Members, and Dr. Haynes. Tonight, I would like to discuss the new cut scores on the SOLs and their implementation. First, I would like to express my disappointment that Hampton did not feel this matter important enough to notify all parents, especially high school parents. I learned of the implementation of the new cut scores when I received the letter that was issued to the entire student population of Gloucester County Public Schools, explaining what was going on and asking the parents to reach out to the state. When I received that, I sent a copy to Dr. Cosiano and asked him, did it affect us? And he said, it affects everybody. I watched the Board of Education work session on October 22nd and the meeting on October 23rd. At that meeting, the board agreed they would leave the public forum open until tomorrow at noon for parent con, communication. And yet Hampton has still not notified their families of what the state is doing and the impact it could have on your students. Unless it changes again, according to what they said at the meeting, a decision will be made at their meeting next week, November the 13th, on how they're going to implement the process of using the new cut scores. At this meeting, they said they're thinking about using 25, 26 as a preparation year, and it would said it would be full implementation next year. Acknowledging they've changed their minds every meeting, I have watched, and there is no telling exactly how they're going to implement. But considering their 17% to 20% increase in the cut scores for students to be able to graduate, every 10th and 11th and 12th grader is impacted by this decision. My child is one who, even though she's an AB student in the ACE Academy and passed all of her SOLs, if they implement it like they're talking about implementing, she will not be allowed to graduate. My question to y'all is, now that I know what steps y'all are taking, what plan of action do y'all have to coach these kids to get them so that if they have to retake the SOLs, they're going to get the new 17% to 20% higher? Thank you.
All right. So now move into item number eight, items for information. Our next meetings, there will be a Community Priorities Workshop, although it will not be a regular school board meeting. All of our board members will be present for that, and that's going to be on November 13th at Kickitane High School. On December 3rd, that will be our next regularly scheduled school board meeting, right here at Jones Magnet Middle School. And then on December 17th will be our regularly scheduled work session. Additional information, Dr. Haynes, we'll start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On Saturday, November 8th, we invite everyone to join us at the Vanguard for the Fourth Annual Hampton Education Foundation Festival, or HEFFEST, a fun evening of live music and celebration honoring our Hampton City Schools educators. Doors open at 6:00 PM, and the music begins at 7:30. Tickets are $5 in advance, $10 at the door, and VIP tickets are $100. Proceeds from the event directly support the Hampton Education Foundation's Teacher Grant Program. Also on November 8th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Hampton City Schools will participate in the Fifth Annual STEM Exploration Community Event at the Professional Workforce Development Center at the Virginia Peninsula Community College, 600 Butler Farm Road. This regional celebration of science, technology, engineering, and math brings together more than 40 STEM organizations, offering fun, hands-on activities for learners of all ages, from preschoolers to adults. It's a great opportunity for families to explore, discover, and be inspired by innovation happening right here in our community. October 31st marked the end of the first marking period for the 25, 26 school year, and report cards will be distributed on November the 11th. Next Thursday, November 13th, we will hold our annual, as Dr. Mason said, Community Priorities Workshop at Kickitane High School from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. On Saturday, November 15th, we will host our Second Annual Celebration of Excellence Community Event from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. This year, we will be at the Mary W. Jackson Neighborhood Center. It's a free event with informational booths, music, and live performances by talented HCS students, kids crafts, games, and face painting. This year, there will be several food trucks on site, with the first 300 guests receiving a free food truck meal ticket. Wednesday, November 26th through Friday, November 28th, all schools and administrative offices will be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday. And I am complete with informational items, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Anything else from board members? Ms. Cherry?
Thank you. I just want to quickly thank everybody, especially this community, for supporting this board on Saturday for our Tissues for Teachers event. It was, it was amazing. We received over $1,000 in donations with sizable contributions coming from 100 black men of the Virginia Peninsula and former mayor Molly Joseph Ward, as well as others. Mike Brady, who was our truck driver for the second year in a row, once we piled everything in, said this was much more than we had last year. We had grocery carts and grocery carts full of paper towels, tissues, hand sanitizers, wipes for our teachers, so that when we get into cold and flu season, it's going to be difficult. And we already know kids who say, you know, I don't have any tissues in my classroom. So, well, they will now. And we want to thank Dr. Jennifer Oliver for leading that charge, and so much for superintendent making sure and ensuring that members of the division leadership team, you all were there. I mean, I'm looking at Ms. Gore, she lives across the water, and she was, she was there. So we really do appreciate that. We had city council people there, we had, as I talked about, people from CNU, and every member of this school board contributed to Tissues for Teachers. Not some of, every member of this board. So I just want to thank everybody for their commitment. As city manager Mary Bunton said, when she was hanging under the canopy with Dr. Tina Banks Gray, she said, I tell you something, when we need it, this community comes together. And it showed on Saturday. Would you not agree? It really did. So just want to thank everybody for that.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Sage?
I just want to extend my gratitude, not just from the lead ambassador program, but from all of the ambassadors in the Hampton City Schools in regards to the Hampton Captains Program and our ability to bring our input to that and actually see it come to life. Most of the things on that presentation were what we suggested from our initial focus groups, and seeing just our pictures and our engagement in that program in general really shows like the overall engagement that we're able to bring to that program. So thank you.
I think that was awesome, too. Thought that was awesome, too.
I, too, would like to just give kudos to Ms. Cherry and also to veteran teacher Michelle Johnson for the Tissues for Teachers Campaign. It's truly remarkable watching how all of this comes together, and the two of them, they do an excellent job organizing this. So thank you all for your commitment to this community. I also want to bring a little bit of attention to the 34th Annual Warrior Classic presented by the Kickitane Marching Warriors that occurred this weekend. And I'll tell you, they had over 20-plus bands that came out to compete in that competition, and it was a true, true testament of what the music and arts programs can do within the schools. Those kids were remarkable in terms of the exhibitions that they put on and the field shows that they had. So I want to thank all those who were involved in that. It was a great opportunity for our community to come together and and watch some, some great bands perform. Anything else from anyone else? All right. With nothing else to be brought before this board, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you.